Twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five. And we'll do the roll call first. Terry Warner.
Here.
Matthew McGovern is on Zoom.
Here.
Matthew here. Laura Sanchez Fowler.
Here.
Mike McClan.
Here.
And Sam Houston.
Here.
Okay, and we will do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Texas pledge.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
And in the. Dear gracious heavenly father, thank you, Lord. Thank you for the rain. And Lord God, we just pray that you guide us and be with us in making decisions for Martin Dale. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right. We are going to start with the public hearing. And this is for the sign. We're going to hold a public hearing to receive comments to consider the approval of a certificate of appropriateness for a commercial sign permit for a metal sign measuring twenty-four inches in height and thirty-two inches in width. The sign is proposed to be placed in the front yard of the property located at eighteen thousand two hundred and twenty-nine San Marcos Highway. And it has the ID number here of three, seven, nine, seven, six in Caldwell County. The sign is intended for a small business, kind of a, just a hobby business called Doria's Cakes. And this is open at six forty.
Mayor, I'm not seeing anybody here to offer comment during the public hearing. I think we can close the vote.
Okay, so that we will close the public hearing. And we will go on to public comments. So Ms. Harper.
I'll hear.
I'm sure y'all know that Carl's and Carl passed away. There'll be a gathering out here at six o'clock tomorrow evening.
Tomorrow evening?
Friday.
Oh, I thought they said April sixth.
Also, it's Friday at six o'clock, so I'll hang up out there.
Outside?
There's something in duets on Wednesday.
Man, it's done for cross and no way to let you down now.
You know, I totally agree with you, Ms. Harper, on that.
Okay, the library is still sponsoring the candidate forum.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's actually Sunday, but.
Let me get some more.
That's all right. That's all right. We have enough.
Anyway, the candidate forum is still happening. It's coming Monday, March thirty-first at six thirty. It's going to be at four thirteen Main Street. And the candidates for mayor and Mr. McGovern in place two and Mr. Clinton on place five will have a chance to speak and get to introduce themselves to the public. And there are people who are still undecided. And then, once they introduce themselves, then they'll have questions that'll be posed by the moderator. And if time allows, the questions from the public. And next out of the fifth annual kite day is Saturday May fifth, next week, in Bates Park. This is from one to three. We'll have free kites, stomp rockets, bowls, and a lot more stuff.
Wait, did you say May fifth?
Oh, April.
Okay, good. I want to make sure I'm, make sure I'm listening. Thank you. No, no, thank you.
I heard stomp for a week and I was lost.
April, April fifth. Thank you.
And I'll ask for free parking from eleven AM to four PM. This is funded by Grant from Porsche Fund about Saint David's Church. Okay, then the area agency on aging, the diabetes class is almost finishing. It's almost finished. It's got a couple more weeks. Next up is matter of balance, and that was a very popular class fall. I would present as bring splitting syrup. This one is healthy snacks. The other one is junk food. And this starts, I think, April sixteenth of the month of May. And it would call the library and register this class. And it's from nine to eleven Wednesdays in four thirteen Main Street. And the AARP tax aid classes has the, tax aid has completed two hundred tax returns. They still have three more weeks to go. Last year, they finished two hundred and fourteen returns total. And this year, we want to do some tests.
Hmm, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to new business. The first item is three point one. Reviewing, consider the approval of the certificate of appropriateness application eighteen thousand two hundred and twenty-nine San Marcos Highway. For the commercial sign application for Doria's Cakes. And so in your packet, we separated out the original application. So I don't know how to go back. It's the third little button. And then there, you can see the original application if you wanted to. Let's see. Oh, done.
This one.
Yeah, Doria's Cake. And then the sign in the packet. It's, it's a sign that's been there for quite some time. And so it's kind of worn. She, she's kind of got caught up in that when we had, when the chief went through and labeled all the signs that were illegal and had people take them down and get out of the packet. There's also the application. It also has the location of where the sign is going to be. So in the packet, it's on private property.
Thanks. How long is the permit good for?
You know, that's a good question.
Believe it's indefinite.
Well, since we're sitting here and talking about it, maybe we should look at the ordinance and find out.
Oh, that's a good idea.
You know, I mean.
The certificate of appropriateness, which is what we're approving. Not the sign application itself.
It, whether or not it could be in the scenic corridor.
Okay.
Don't know that there's a date on there. I think as long as the business is in business, it's good.
But we don't really know. All we have to do is just really quickly look at the ordinance and, and see if it's good for a year. I mean, I, I thought they had to pay a certain amount of money to have the permit. Isn't there a fee?
Yes, a fee is applied to the permit form.
How much is the fee?
Hundred dollars. Because we have to put it in the newspaper. And we have to do this public hearing.
I'd, I'd really like to know how long the sign is, is good for, because I've had several merchants ask me about signs in the scenic corridor, commercial signs. And if I don't know the answers, I'll look it up myself. But I mean, we're just sitting here talking about signs in the scenic corridor and I think it would be something that would be useful information for all of us, you know? To, to, to know, is it an indefinite permit? I thought it was just for a year myself.
You would make a.
Go ahead, here.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hey, McGovern.
It, it, a COA, it permits a different, this is a COA. It's no different than the store committee. Because a COA, it's a COA. It's indefinite.
So are we going to talk about it again after we say that it's got a certificate of appropriateness? I mean, when are we going to actually talk about the sign again? When do we have a chance to talk about this sign again? Do we have another chance or is this it?
So there's, there is.
Know how long it could be there. That's all I'm asking. We're, I, I, I'm not asking a very complicated thing. That's all I'm asking.
So most scenic corridor approvals are permanent structures. This sign is not a permanent structure. The in the context of a permanent structure being built, my understanding of the ordinance is that it's an indefinite period. There is a time expiration clause within the ordinance of one year, might be extended to a year on the city council. That's never been something that's been enforced on a per sign basis requiring reapplication. And there is not, the ordinance itself doesn't really speak that procedure. The way that I've been administrating that clause or this requirement is once granted, as long as there's not an annual change, we're not citing those, those signs. So the reference, the reference for that is section one fifty dot zero two eight subsection I, time of expiration.
I'm sorry, one fifty what?
Zero two eight.
Two eight.
Subsection or subparagraph I.
I.
And it says one year.
It says time of expiration, certificate of appropriateness will expire one year from the date it is issued if the proposed activities has not commenced. Or two years from the date of the certificate is issued if the proposed activity has not been completed. That tells me that it's permanent. But if it's a temporary item, that's not destruction, then maybe you.
That's a temporary sign. That's not a permanent sign.
That's what, so. I think you could, if you want to continue to review these things, you can. I don't, I don't really see the use.
So.
Well, I mean, it's a temporary sign, but it's going to be up there on a permanent basis. I mean, are you saying that it's temporary because it's not sitting in concrete or because of the way it's structured? You're, you're calling that a temporary sign, even though it's going to be there permanently?
If you want to, this is a, this is a choice the council is making. My initial response was it's an indefinite. If you want to review it, there might be a way for you to review it after a year or two. That's under there. But I, I've, in in my role as city administrator and, and working with the police department, my recommendation is that we, once issued, it's, it's issued, especially for something like this.
Yeah. Makes sense to me.
Now with it, with like the Red Barn, we've never made them come back. They did their sign in.
Permanent.
Permanent sign. But the chief had him remove all those flag signs.
Well, they also had a bunch of other signs, tacos and burgers and all, all that stuff. But I mean, if this, if we're saying that this sign can stay here one year or two years or longer, I would not classify that as a temporary sign. I would classify it as a permanent sign. And so.
I, I would agree with that. Yeah.
All I'm trying to do is understand the ordinance. That's all I'm trying to do because I, if, if I'm the one that has to I'm just trying to understand the ordinance because it's very confusing. That's all.
You don't, you don't want the city ordinance, those city suborderings established over history.
The, the processing of an application, the decision makers, the city council for making a determination on the certificate of appropriateness. The public hearing, city council will conduct a public hearing on the application. If the city council determines that the proposed activity is appropriate, it will approve the application and issue the applicant a certificate of appropriateness. If the city council determines that a certificate of appropriateness should not be issued or should be issued to, subject to conditions, they'll be placed upon its records and the reasons for its determination. Time for decision, city council will render its decision within thirty days of the date of applications accepted for filing. That thirty day window, I believe, is March thirty or April first. It's the, right before the next scheduled regular council meeting. The criteria for approval, the following criteria will determine whether the application will be approved, conditionally approved or denied, whether the proposed development activity will have a detrimental effect on the historical, architectural, cultural character of the scenic corridor, and whether the property owner would suffer extreme hardship, not limited to solely loss of profit, unless the certificate of appropriateness is issued. I don't think either of those things bear upon denial in this instance. Time of expiration, certificate of appropriateness will expire one year from the date it is issued if the proposed activity is not commenced. Or two years from the date of certificate is issued if the proposed activity has not been completed. So if we're approving a sign that is not constructed, you could, I perceivably say you haven't completed this. But I think this is, this temporary sign was being proposed for approval, not the construction of a sign. I would consider that to be an indefinite approval once that's made. And then the remaining elements really took a violation.
And I don't have an opinion. I'm just trying to read it along with you. And isn't it the time of expiration?
It's really the context of a building permit. So it's, if, I, my understanding, it would function like a building permit where a building permit is issued. But if a substantial progress hasn't been made towards completion of that permitted activity, then it expires and a new permit is required to be approved. I believe that's the intent of that time for, time for, of expiration clause has to do with it being built. So.
Because the proposed activity would be the placing of the sign.
Right.
Not the activity that the sign is indicating.
Right. The activity that the sign is indicating.
Is the.
Is a home, is a home business.
Right.
That's generally approved in our zoning. The, the main stipulation there is that you can't have outside employees performing services at that home business. So as long as it's the, the property owner doing this within the, the only employees of that business live there and are part of that family onsite, there's, there's not.
Zoning, there is MU, Jared.
Uh, I don't believe so. I believe.
I think it's commercial.
Isn't just.
Right on the line there. That property is right on the line.
And I'm sorry, explain what the, why, why we're saying that? Because would that make a difference for?
I, I guess it could make a difference of whether you could consider the activity commercial. Maybe they're allowed to have more employees than just the home business.
But, but either way, that's not really the question. The question, like my, my clarification was just simply over, like what is, what needed to be completed? What is considered the proposed activity? And it's not the business. I don't, I, like, my question isn't about the business characteristics. It was more just, did you mean in two years, will she still need this sign? Or in two years, the sign itself would have to be done?
The sign itself would have to be done. So if they're using a temporary constructed sign in a permanent basis, I would consider that to be permanently in place at that point, even though it could be pulled out.
Yeah.
Um, in the situation of a sign like in front of a Red Barn Bakery or the, the Feed Barn, where they're constructed signs, if they're permitted to construct a sign and then that sign was not constructed, that's when that one year, two year thing comes into.
Thank you.
So if we approve the certificate of appropriateness, then that means the sign will be able to be permitted indefinitely?
Yes.
There you go.
Okay.
Could, could you find the part about it was illuminated sign or non-illuminated? Since this is an exception and it's illuminated sign, I, I would like to see the difference between those two.
So I don't believe illumination of signs pertain to the scenic corridor generally. So our separate sign ordinance, this is one of conflicting things that is somewhat of the subject of chapter three dot three, or item three dot three on tonight's agenda, is the interpretation of the scenic corridor as it relates to signage as the sign application requirements exist in its separate check. So there's nothing specifically in our scenic corridor related to illumination. Generally, when other, when the Feed Barn had come through, Red Barn Bakery, Red Barn Bakery, not Feed Barn, Red Barn Bakery came through, there was a discussion regarding the scenic corridor and lighting as one of those conditional approval items. So if there's something that the council would like to consider, the lighting as it relates to the scenic corridor, that's been done in the past, and it's something that can be considered here. Separately, we do have a lighting dark sky ordinance that applies to lighting fixtures and how they're constructed and shielded and how they're oriented. So we have, I don't think we've done a lot of enforcement on that yet, but.
I have a question. Is it possible that whatever we're going to do, like I heard that you had made a very nice, simple suggestion of simply referring from one to the other so that people know there's like more? Could we also refer to the night sky ordinance so that whatever lighting was determined, they know to go look at, like it has to be constructed this way and be that?
I think that, yeah, I think that'd be great. We'll add that to three dot three as an additional.
Yeah, that might make it easier for people to find everything they need at one time, which then cuts down on the amount of time that the city has to be answering questions.
Is there any exception in the certificate of appropriateness about off premises or, or on, on premises? Where, where is that in the one, five, zero?
So there's only regarding setbacks and architectural features. That's, there's really nothing that determines signage and the placement of signs. Most of that is handled under chapter one fifty-two.
But that's, I, I appreciate how you're trying to combine one, five, zero with one, five, two. But if we're trying to give a certificate of appropriateness to a sign under one, five, zero, it seems like we would have to cross-reference one, five, two in many instances, like in terms of illumination, off premises, on, on premises. I mean, you, you, you can't just read something for the certificate of appropriateness because, and then say it's, it's appropriate because then it may be under the one, five, zero ordinance, but with one, five, two, you have to cross-reference and check all the other things pertaining to signage as it relates to signs. And then you have to apply that to one, five, zero. So it's like we're only looking at one, five, zero and saying, okay, it's fine. It's appropriate. But we're not doing enough cross-referencing and checking with one, five, two and how that is more of an astringent sign ordinance.
Well, why is the sign called illuminated? Because it has.
Yeah, it has a very small light that just shines just on the sign. Yeah, solar.
That's a little solar light. It flips out.
Yeah.
Minimum light.
Yeah, like two or four lumens or something.
Yeah, I don't even know how you would see it from the, from the.
About just a point of clarification for what you're asking. So when we started this conversation, we were saying, oh, well, this is about the certificate of appropriateness. It's not about the permit. Then is it true that the permit would check against one fifty-two? And this would only deal with the additional stuff? So we don't necessarily have to do both. If that, if something, if, if those things, the signage stuff in one fifty-two is getting already addressed, then all we need to be doing is the, is the one fifty. Is that correct?
It could, yes, that, that's correct. Sam also has, has a valid point too, and that could also be correct. Both things.
Yeah, yeah.
What, what he was saying, you know, these, these ordinances should be applied to the scenic corridor. We definitely can. So, you know, a motion could be made for a conditional approval of what was the use of terms that we use. Conditionally approved, yeah. So you could, you could, city council could conditionally approve this certificate of appropriateness as long as the requirements of one fifty-two are acquired.
Gotcha.
Is there, is there any violation to one fifty-two currently with the sign as it stands right now?
I have not dived very deep into it. My, the only area where you could get caught on an extreme technicality is its location in relation to highway eighty and how close or far away it is with these text officers.
Three hundred feet.
That's, that's one fifty. One fifty-two, what you're asking, I think, is the sign ordinance itself. And it would be in violation only by virtue of size, because it says you can only have a sign on your property right now that's twelve inches by twelve inches.
Yeah, square foot, square foot.
Without permit, correct.
Without a permit. So granted a permit, it would, assuming that it would be approved.
Yes.
It would, I don't think there's anything that hit.
The only, the only thing that talks about lighting is two zero sixty, zero, zero six, excuse me, prohibited sign locations is string lights, not a fix. I mean, it vaguely talks about string lighting and lighting of signs there on number nine and ten.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the only thing that's remotely you know, negative, if you will, about the current sign.
And, and even that, the sign, the, the lighting device is shielded. So I don't think it violates this or the dark stuff.
Exactly. I'm like, I, I totally agree with you. It's, it, you're stretching to go to those, you know, those, those ordinances to say you're violation of some ilk. So, I mean, you know, this thing was, that thing's been there for five plus years and all of a sudden it's become an issue. I mean, this is just merely a formality as far as I'm concerned. I mean, are we going to?
So good to be able to discuss it though.
The, the, the one that might get off the technicality is maybe the temporary nature of the signing because it's not, it's not specifically exempted under the other one fifty-two oh seven. But it's been, it's been shown to not blow away over the last five years. So. So I, I think in some sense, I think would be considered a permanent sign, even though it's more of a temporary life.
Well, even, even buildings can blow away. So I mean, but we still call them permanent. So I mean, that looks permanent to me.
Yeah, I, nothing immediately jumped out to me as being an issue. But I have not dived that, that far.
And to give people a little history here, you know, when the city court came about? Billboards.
Yeah.
Exactly what it was all about. Don Burcocks was the mayor in two thousand and one or two. And that's what they came up with it, keep the billboards coming in. And that's why that ordinance was developed.
Somebody wanted to put a huge billboard on highway eighty.
Well, you do see Albert Sealemons. We did, there is big billboards, but not in our city.
Right.
Is this a new difference, huh?
No.
No.
Same one.
Same, yeah.
Highway eighty, if you don't know the look, you don't even.
No, it's small.
So the only one that, that I, okay. Okay, so under, like you were talking about, Jared, the permanent versus temporary, under T for one temporary sign, blah, 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 and displayed no more than a hundred and twenty days in any calendar year. That contains only a non-commercial message. But then where is the part about if it's a temper, why, why?
So this, this.
Why is it decided that this is a temporary sign? Is it because it's digging into the groundable?
Yeah, it's really that construction is why it would relate to temporary. And this does have a commercial message. It's advertising.
Yeah.
So it's really a permanence.
Right.
I, I, I think.
Because they're talking about like a birthday or a wedding or where they put a sign, garage sale.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, and that's what I've been saying, that there's not much clarification between temporary and permanent, you know? And also though, that sign has been there for so long that based under the one fifty-two ordinance, it may very. And also, though, that sign has been there for so long that based under the one fifty two ordinance, it may very well be a non-conforming sign. Because it was there for many years before the ordinance was enacted. Say the Baptist, Martindale Baptist sign is a non-conforming sign. It's been there for a long time.
The back. Not in city.
I don't, I don't want, I don't want to discuss that sign in the context of this.
Okay, but I, I'm just saying, can, can we look at non-conforming or just don't worry about it? Let's just worry about it.
So prohibited signs from the. Um, it is what we're looking at, it's off-premise signs, temporary signs, state. This, this is kind of like a stake sign.
Does one fifty two twelve substitution of message allowed? It, doesn't that just say that a non-commercial sign message is the same as a commercial sign message in terms of what's? Really, the same regulations are applicable and all that?
Yeah, that's confusing, that one fifty two twelve. That's very.
It's, it's to make sure that we're not regulating different forms of speech.
But I mean, then why do we have? Why do we have the earlier section T that I was reading? Like, why did we differentiate there if they're actually the same? Why did we differentiate in T?
So. It's saying that. As I read A.
Yes.
I guess you have to read A and B together. So there, basically, you can have either commercial or non-commercial messages. Maybe what this is referring to is the changing of a sign from a commercial, an existing sign that's been permitted. From a commercial message to a non.
Non-commercial message.
Um.
You're allowed to create them on the same sign without needing a new permission. Maybe.
Something, something we haven't encountered. Um, I don't think that would apply in this in in regards to this uh.
Sure. No, it would not. I, I concur with that. With all my heart.
Okay, so. Are we ready to have a motion?
Well, then, before we make the motion, we are accepting the certificate of appropriateness based on the permit.
That's a choice. You can choose to do that, or you're accepting the certificate of appropriateness on the basis of the application. Not subject to any other. Conformance. Two, two things are required. So for, for Doris' case to put a sign in. Two, two applications are required. One is for scenic corridors through their appropriateness. Application and the other one is the sign permit application to permit requirements.
So this sign will still require a sign permit application?
Yes. It's not otherwise exempt in the list of all the exemptions.
And a fee.
There's no fee with the sign.
Uh, there's, there's fees attached to the um different applications.
One fifty two has a fee for the sign.
Yes.
And I. How much?
One hundred.
One hundred.
That was the certificate of appropriateness.
No, there, well, there's a, in the ordinance one fifty two, there is a permit fee for the sign in one fifty two.
Yes, Sam, you got them to pay more money.
What?
You got them to pay more money, Sam.
I, I'm just trying to understand this very complicated ordinance because I've had many people ask me about it.
You gotta read it, fuck in the meat. It's pretty simple. You gotta read it.
I don't. I don't think that it's simple, but either way, I'm happy for the discussion because I've been able to ask some questions as well.
So I think, you know, in a, in a future. Text. You know, a, a one square foot sign. The dollars. Seems. A little bit misplaced. Uh, a sign like this. You know, uh, uh, that's so, so small. Um. I think charging the fee might be a little bit misplaced.
I totally agree.
Um. At least at that level where it's not a uh. Um. It's not, it's not like a billboard or something that takes a lot of.
Exactly.
Reviews to identify whether it's compliance and.
Yeah, great. It's like, it's almost like a, it's, we discussed it fully, but.
That's, that's, well, that's beyond the, the purpose of this discussion, but. For a future discussion.
I agree.
So then we won't require the sign to go to one fifty two, then? We're just accepting it, the permit? The certificate of appropriateness and the permit then?
The, the, the permit approval happens separately from the um. Scenic uh corridor. So the built-in, the sign. One fifty two, the building official is responsible for issuing the sign permits. So. In this case. Scenic corridor's approval is certificate of appropriateness is required prior to issuing one fifty two permit. Um.
But wouldn't we have to give a variance for the permit fee of one hundred dollars under one fifty two if we're saying that we wouldn't think that we would want to charge?
It's eighty for the sign, it's a hundred for the COA.
Eighty for the sign.
Mm-hmm. So is it okay to make a motion and then we can discuss it?
Yeah, we're doing it kind of backwards. Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve. The COA application at. One thousand eight hundred and, oh wait, eighteen thousand two hundred and twenty-nine San Marcos Highway Commercial Sign Application. If it meets the requirement of one fifty two.
I second that. Oh, go ahead, Matthew. Go for it, dude.
I second.
Good.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
Uh, are we going to ask them to then file another uh assigned permit?
She said, she, she made that in there.
I put it as long as it beats the requirements of one fifty two.
And we do have a sign permit application. We had them do both.
Okay, that's all I got.
Okay, do we need to put, um, do we need to put a? Mark an am, an amendment? To say that? Oh, no, because we're not doing that. I was gonna say to waive the eighty dollars, but we're not, that's not part of our thing. That's part of the, so no.
Turning the building official.
Right.
Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. McGovern.
Um. Should we do three, three, since we're talking about signs and then come back to three point two?
Sure.
Okay, we'll go to three point three. Um, because we're still talking about signs. And so in your packet, it's ordinance. Twenty twenty-five dash oh three dash oh three. And it, we're talking about modifying section one fifty dot zero two eight. Certificate required for development in the scenic corridor.
So, yeah, this, this clarifies that signs subject to regulation under chapter one fifty two. Is applicable to the scenic corridor.
And we were gonna also modify it to um include the. Um, lighting, the other lighting, the dark sky lighting, right?
Oh, yeah, we can add that um has. I think it would apply to. All of it. Um. Let me see how.
Yeah, but Jared, does that, should that be referenced under one fifty or one fifty two?
Yeah, because one fifty has the lighting.
Yeah, it'd be one fifty. I mean, it's a one fif, so the. The ordinance under consideration is modifying chapter one fifty scenic corridor. Uh. Certificate required. And then.
You're gonna modify.
Doesn't it matter? Go ahead, Terry.
You're gonna mod, um, thank you, thank you, Laura. You're gonna modify number four signage to include. Subject to chapter one fifty, you sign regulations and. The dark sky? Is that what you're thinking?
I don't think that would be. Broad enough to carry all the, to carry all the situations in which a scenic corridor approval would be.
I agree.
Um, dark sky, because you could have that in a remodel, construction, reconstruction.
I.
Case.
Yeah, I agree.
So under the prohibited signs and locations, it mentions lights. Um.
Yeah. There we go. I think that's where we, we'd add it in uh sub paragraph. Uh, paragraph B, sub paragraph eight, at the end of sub paragraph eight. Reference the dark sky ordinance, chapter one fifty seven, I think.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, one fifty seven.
So you're gonna modify. B eight of one, of one fifty twenty-eight?
Yes.
Okay, I get that. I get that. That makes sense. That makes a lot more sense than putting it up there. Yeah, putting up on.
And I would, and I would probably instead. Says and or awnings.
No, no, I agree. I totally agree. That's absolutely where it belongs. No, that's awesome.
Do you want to modify this and come back?
I think that that change is simple enough that we could probably do that. Um. A, a mo, a motion to amend.
Yeah.
Um, the proposed to include. That uh the change on section eight and then a motion, a second motion to approve as amended.
Go for it, Mr. McGovern.
Oh, God, no.
A motion to amend section eight. What? Section eight, um, B, was it? One fifty and then section?
One fifty zero two eight, B eight.
Yeah, but you're referencing something else. To what?
Right.
To chapter one fifty seven. Dark sky.
Okay, now I'm totally confused.
Okay.
As to what I'm supposed to say for the motion.
How, how about this? Uh, motion to amend. Section. One fifty dot zero two eight. B eight. To include. Subject to regulation under, or in accordance with regulation under chapter one fifty seven dark side.
That'll be included in B eight.
Thank you, Sam. Good luck, good luck, Terry.
Well. Okay, we got it, we got it. We got it. Just, just help me and I'll, and I'll repeat what you say. Okay. So I'll make a motion. Wait, a motion to accept. Uh, the, the ordinance modifying section one fifty point zero zero two eight certificate required for development in the scenic corridor. With an amendment to the section to include.
To include section one fifty seven.
To include chapter one fifty seven, the dark sky ordinance.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second. Go ahead.
You go ahead. No.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion?
There you go, Mr. McGovern, you gotta discuss it.
Oh, that's awesome.
Oh, that's good. Okay. Very good.
So I'll, I'll just ask real quick about one fifty. So you've summarized it basically in that. Uh, addition or you're trying to get people to combine the two ordinances or to refer to both of them when. They want to put a sign up in the scenic corridor.
Yeah, so the certificate of appropriateness is required prior to undertaking the following activities. Installing signage and is subject to the regulation under chapter one fifty two.
Is there one part of it where city council can approve certain signs uh in, in there? I mean, in one fifty?
So the certificate of appropriateness is still required. But the signage that is applicable to being approved for certificate of appropriateness is that which is governed under chapter one fifty two. So there are exceptions to chapter one fifty two regarding like. Temporary signs and other, you know, smaller items. There's a, there's a list of them. Those would be exempted. So um like a political yard sign or whatever that has a thirty day exemption from the sign. That would be exempt. From the certificate of appropriateness. Or, or, and things like that. But anything that is subject to the regulation of one fifty two. Is applicable to the certificate of appropriateness required.
It's, it's a, it's a confusing ordinance, one fifty two is. It, it really is, and I wish we could maybe spend some more time on, on it later. Because I've had a lot of merchants ask me about wanting to put a commercial sign up. And now I'm talking about the commercial sign ordinance, okay? And that's what we're talking about now.
As long as it's on premise, it's onsite. They're generally going to be allowed. Um. Whether it's in scenic corridor or not, the scenic corridor has to solicit their appropriateness for whatever their, their building. There's some. Stipulations regarding the placement of the, of the. Commercial sign like. You can't use it on the roof of a barn, for example. And there's other things to talk about, but. Any business interest who has a. Desires to put out a sign, they're welcome to contact. The city will try to help them achieve what they're looking to do within the construct of our.
But it would, but there's a difference between putting it in the right of way of text dot or putting it on private property. Those two things come into play uh for commercial signs under one fifty two.
Yes, it does. And as it applies to certificate of appropriateness. The. Boundary is three hundred feet from. Highway eighty, basically. So. That includes both private property and text dot right away.
Because there, there is something that text dot has called city pride, where you can put signs within a, in a. Close proximity to the city limit sign. It could be either a nonprofit organization such as Visit Martindale. So we have a nonprofit group called Visit Martindale. So there could be a sign in the right of way of text dot that says Visit Martindale or.
Text art.
Yeah. But, so I, I am, I'm only discussing this because I think many merchants and uh landowners want to discuss. Very soon, commercial signs in the city limits of Martindale to, to propel people off of the highway. To come to our downtown. And they have been bugging me about this for months and months and months, and that's why I don't mean to seem off cuff. But I'm trying to understand the difference between one fifty and one fifty two. And it's all very confusing about political signs and where you can put political signs on a fence or. Or in the scenic corridor and, and so commercial signs are al- also something that the merchants. Want to talk about within the next month or two. They really want to because the business across the street has closed down as a result of not having signage. Through Visit Martindale. Visit Martindale has fallen to the wayside completely.
Yeah.
And we need to get an organization of concerned city council people or citizens. And I had been working on Carl, with Carlton on, on, on this too. He and I had been speaking about this a lot. We need to draw more people off the highway. With commercial signs to come to our downtown. Our downtown businesses are suffering. They're suffering. And that's all I hear from them. You know, the cafe is only open on Friday and Saturday. Duet's is trying to do whatever they can on Wednesdays, Thursdays and Fridays. The Harper store may make a couple of hundred dollars on, on the weekend. We need to organize this. As a city, as a city council, to help our businesses. And so far. With the hotel tax money that we have, we haven't used it. We haven't done any, anything. We had a, a, an organization started, a Visit Martindale.
Uh, Sam, with all due respect, that's not the function of a city council. We need a, we need an outside organization like you're speaking about. To actually come up with a way to market Martindale. But the function of a city council is to do the city's business. So now we have a motion on the table and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries and then we need a second motion?
I think it was captured in the.
And it was a captured, okay.
Um.
So now we'll move on to. Uh, three. Uh, three, I lost my notes here, three point two, ordinance for collection of short term rental taxes.
This this ordinance is, uh, this is your third time seeing it and, um. Unless there's any questions, I think this is ready to be approved.
What about this house and them have having the music up at past ten?
Well, um.
That's a, that's a separate one, this one just has to do with the collection of taxes.
Oh, okay.
But I will speak to you that Craig and I have been talking about it and Deanna did find the minutes. We didn't specifically find that there, that they were okay to go until eleven o'clock. But I mean, I believe him that he did, and so right now would, they don't have that many instances where. They're going past ten o'clock, so I don't. I I don't know that we need to really stop them from doing that right now.
That's fine, as as long as he knows about that and that's great, I.
I copy chief on it.
So I haven't had any calls for like unreasonable noise from the uh, from there, haven't had any. I really had a couple of unreasonable noise calls ever. And I bounced back and forth between what the state law says and what our city ordinance says. Uh, I was telling y'all, I had one Monday night, I had like three in more than someone calling me. About an unreasonable noise situation and they took decimal readings. And it wasn't to the state law uh measurement, it was eighty one decimals, but eighty one decimals at three o'clock in the morning is ridiculous. I'll say that, and so uh reinforced that under the city ordinance, I think it's ninety or ninety two.
Was it Airbnb or just a residence, just a party?
Well, there are, no, I'll leave that comment for later.
There you go.
Okay, so we'll get back to. This ordinance. And do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance for collection of short term rental pack rentals.
And do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, is there any um discussion about this ordinance?
McGovern, do you have a comment?
I love it.
Okay, since we have a. Motion is second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing them, the motion carries.
Excellent.
Okay, and then we just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it, make a motion to adjourn this meeting at seven thirty nine.
I'll second that.
Woo hoo.
All right.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.